Free City Commission Meeting to Order will begin by calling the roll. City Clerk?
Mayor Hassel?
Here.
Ms. Ushereidi?
Present.
Ms. Butler?
Here.
Ms. Maude?
Here.
Ms. Morris?
Present.
Mayor, we have five commissioners present. The core of those three has been met.
Very good. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is a proclamation. It is International Women's Day, and Ms. Ushereidi, President Sujatha Prakash, and Barbara Gatewood, subcommittee members of the International Women's Day, American Association of University Women, will be present to receive the proclamation. Ladies, come down front, please. Barb, are you coming or not?
She wants to take a picture.
We'll do this. Wait, we'll get it right here. We'll get you a chance. Very good. Well, thank you for being here this evening. So whereas in 1911, International Women's Day was first honored in Austria, Denmark, Germany, and Switzerland, when more than 1 million women and men attended rallies campaigning for women's rights to work, vote, be trained, hold public office, and for an end to gender discrimination. And in 1977, the United Nations General Assembly adopted a resolution calling on member states to proclaim a day for women's rights and international peace. And following the United Nations' lead, each year, the U.S. President issues a proclamation calling on all citizens to observe March as National Women's History Month, as well as a separate proclamation on International Women's Day, March 8th. And whereas our country continues to see the rise of powerful movements that shine the light where women's rights and freedoms still fall short, and advancing the rights, opportunities, and full participation of women and girls is the great unfinished business of the 21st century. International Women's Day is a day to celebrate the collective power of women, uphold women's achievements, recognize challenges, focus greater attention on women's rights and gender equality, encourage and mobilize all people to do their part to bring about positive change. Now therefore, I mark Hattasol, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, to hereby proclaim Wednesday, March 8th, 2023, as International Women's Day in the City of Manhattan, and to motivate and unite friends, colleagues, and the community to think, act, and accelerate gender parity, to hashtag embrace equity. There you go. And that's it. Appreciate you being here. Wait a second, my tongue up.
Who wants to say something?
Yeah, I'll say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the proclamation this evening. This is our eighth year of doing this for the American Association of University of Women. And typically, we have panelists, and same as this year. Tomorrow, we are celebrating at the Holiday Inn at campus. And typically, we have about 30 or 40 people sign up for dinner. We have over 70 people that made reservations for dinner, and we have over 80 people attending. The program is free to the community. Please feel free to come and join us. We have four wonderful panelists. I'm going to read off their names and where they're coming from. I want to make sure, I don't know, probably won't say it right. Siddiqua Nazari, she's one of our Afghan refugees. She came here last year, and she had a few family members in the United States, but they found their home now in Kansas, in the state of Kansas. And she's working on her GED and has aspirations to be a nurse. Maria Isguero, she's a K-State student from Mexico at the university, like I just said. She was on the search committee for President Lynton with me, and that's how I met her. And she's also president of the Hispanic American Leadership Organization, otherwise known as HALO. Lamya Abdullah Achela is from Morocco, and she is currently a master student in AQ Miller School of Journalism. And she has worked for women's rights in several countries in the Middle East, and she's going to be speaking on that. Dr. Antonina Brojaka is from Ukraine, and she is also at the university and is dean in Ukraine of, I want to say dean of economics. So we have really outstanding stellar panelists, and we want to learn more from them, and we want to make sure we understand their culture, and they made Kansas their home, and we want to welcome them here and show them that we are a wonderful place, and we hope they get jobs and stay in Manhattan, Kansas. So we are celebrating International Women's Day, and hopefully, all of you come out and support us as well. Thank you.
The next item is the first meeting of the month, general public comments. So those wanting to make comments not related to any item on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public that signed up in person are on the list here at the podium. We'll go first. If you haven't already signed up to speak, when your time comes, please be sure to sign in on the list located on the podium. Please state your name and residential address or organization you're representing for the record and for those listening and watching this evening. Each speaker has five minutes, can only speak once, and must stop speaking when the timer sounds. Neither the commissioners nor city staff will answer questions or debate an issue. We will take your comments under advisement. So with that being said, our first speaker who signed up is Jen Smith. Please come forward and tell us what you're thinking about.
Okay. I'm here to speak about, oh, sorry. I'm here to speak about the St. Patty's Day event that occurred this weekend. Most of it was on Raton Street, where I live. And what happened was not acceptable. There were, it wasn't safe to be in my front yard. I couldn't leave my dog in my fenced backyard unsupervised. There were students wandering the properties, urinating, vomiting, climbing the fence into my backyard, which was damaged. And as bad as it was at my yard, it was actually worse at some of the yards around me, which were, you know, one house closer to the parties in each direction. And it really, it was not acceptable for residents of Manhattan to go through this weekend. So that's what I came here to say. So, thank you.
Next up is Don Wilson.
My wife and I have lived on Raton for over 30 years, so we've seen Fake Patty evolve into what it has become. I didn't have any physical damage on my property, other than trash. There were more naked female behinds in my backyard than the latest issue of Penthouse. The lady who just left at 3:00 in the afternoon, her and I were in her driveway and watched a man come up and relieve himself on a very sparse bush. Around 5:00, watched a man stand next to a parked car in front of, well, on our house side of the street, do the same. And the amount of trash, I don't know if any of you have seen videos, but a year ago, there was as many people as there was this year. But a year ago, it was more controlled. It didn't get out of, so out of hand. And every privately owned house or owner-occupied house had a lot of work to do to clean it up. And if we were to call the police every time something happened, we'd need an officer standing at each house and have them on speed dial, because it was just a constant parade. The one lady I saw in the backyard, and I, well, okay, I'll wait for her to get done and then let them know that they're on private property, because there was no regard by any of them for private property. And so it has kind of gotten bad. And that's all I got to say about it.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to comment on an item that's not on the agenda this evening? Sign in on the sign-in sheet and then state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Brett Cale. I'm here with the residents of the Royal Tower Apartment Complex. We have paperwork from the fire department stating that the building apparently is already condemned. And this is a 63-unit building with families and college students living in it. And we had a meeting with the landlord that drove 1,000 miles from North Carolina. We had a meeting with him yesterday. And from what it sounds like, he's not willing to compensate anyone in case if they end up being homeless. I mean, there's families, there's children. Some of the people that were at the meeting yesterday said that their whole entire food supply went bad because of how bad the mold was inside their own apartment. Some people have been moved from different apartments in the Royal Towers over to the other sides to get away from the mold, when the other side has mold just as bad. I mean, this couple, they were here in the meeting yesterday that we had with the landlord, and they have a two-month-old baby. And they stated that if they get evacuated from this building, that they will not have anywhere to go. And that's very concerning. And they're not the only people. And not even all the residents are aware of what's about to happen, because in nine days, as soon as March 16th, this building may be vacated. These people came to the City of Manhattan, mostly students live in this building. And they thought they were getting best bang for buck going over to the Royal Towers, just a couple blocks from campus, it's right there. And come to find out, all these people are basically being scammed, because they may be homeless here very, very soon. So that's my comment on the Royal Towers. I'm just hoping maybe the city can provide some type of relief, because I asked the landlord if he's willing to liquidate any of his other properties or assets, and he said absolutely not. So that's my comment. That's all I have to say today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jason Whedon. I'm also here to address what happened on Raton this weekend. It has gotten so out of control as a property owner there. I just listed a few things quick today. We had to turn our water completely off at our house, because kids were crawling into the bushes and turning on our water, flooding our yard. So we had to turn the water completely off for our house for the remainder of the day. We have a privacy fence in our backyard. A good 100-foot of it needs to be replaced from it being ripped down and kicked down. We had gutters ripped off of our house, complete downspouts of our gutters ripped off. One is on the neighbor's roof. It's just, two windowsills were ripped off of the house. And this is all, we did not have anybody intentionally on our property, but at all times of the day, hundreds of people on our property, to where, we made multiple calls to the police department, and it got to the point where we asked the police officers, what do we do to protect our property? And they said, and I quote, "Your guess is as good as ours." So, I mean, what do we do next year? Do we hire armed security? And if that happens, people will die. I mean, it is so out of control with, I mean, violence. Seen kids falling out of trees, falling off of roofs. We've seen several young men beaten, walking around bloody and dazed. And they said they got jumped and were beaten, and that, several. I mean, that's, I would love to know how many young women got violated this weekend. It's between 10th and 11th Street, it's hard to guess how many people. I have a video if anybody wants to see it, but 5,000, 10,000 people on a block everywhere. We had people attempting to break into our windows. Caught people in the bushes trying to jimmy open our windows to get in. At any point in the time during the day, if our house was unlocked, people were coming inside. 45 seconds unlocked, people are just wandering inside. This is a non-stop from 11:00 on, and then most years, it stops about dark, and it did not this year. There was even a concert starting around dark this year. My brother could not have his son at his house at all this year. He knew that in advance, so he had to make other plans for his son, because that's, last year, he had just people wandering in, and he had to tell his four-year-old son that, oh, they're just at the wrong house. It's gotten completely out of control to the point, it's like the things you see on the movies. And it's just destruction everywhere. It was two full days of cleaning up trash. And it, I don't know what the solution is, but what happened this weekend should never be allowed to happen again. It's not safe, and it's not fair to property owners. I don't know what the solution is, I really don't, but it's asinine. It really is, and it's embarrassing for our community that that's allowed to happen. Our police completely lost control, and I don't know if this is a police issue, a city issue, whose issue this is, but it should not be on the property owners. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anybody else, one more?
My name is James Rickert. I'm a resident at the Royal Towers. I've come here today just to kind of make some comments regarding the communication between the city, the owner, and us as the tenants. It's been remarkably poor. The risk reduction letter that we were supposed to have received, I'm sure in February, we received it this last Friday. And knowing that, you know, these people with families and children will not be able to find accommodations in a week and a quarter is just extremely disheartening. I'm sorry. And we had an individual today with a hammer going to town on these concrete structures at the building that just frightened the hell out of everybody. And the building was shaking, it was vibrating, it was totally scary. So we just want to feel safe in our homes. Hopefully, this matter gets handled appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else to comment on an item that's not on the general agenda for this evening? Come on up and sign your name.
I'm Nicola Anru. I live at 7250 Troy Road in Manhattan, Kansas. I came in a little bit late, so I heard partial concerns about the Raton issues from Fake Patty's Day. And I really just wanted to comment, as an Aggieville business owner, and the communication that I received from the Aggieville director that said that the city has decided to do two roll-off dumpsters in Aggieville for this Saturday to be used for all that need it. They will be on 12th Street and south of Morrow. I've also met with RCPD, and they said they are committed to protect and serve and that day versus, for that day versus enforcement. I trust that the new director, Brian Pete, will monitor this and wants Aggieville to have a successful day with no issues. I didn't know if that was received by the commissioners as well. So that's an email that was received by the business owners in Aggieville, just so that you are aware of that, and hearing statements from those. And I have employees that did do deliveries throughout Manhattan during that day. And I will say that Aggieville as a whole has not promoted this. It is certain businesses that have. And so I just wanted to make sure that the community knew that that was not an Aggieville promotion, but also that I do think it's a concern for the future that we should definitely address, because I think there was many statements that I heard from my staff that said that there were like 2,000-plus people on Raton Avenue, and that is very scary for people. And I think that's why Aggieville stopped promoting this idea. And I'm hoping that maybe we can, as a city, find a way to go through that. And I did not appreciate that email, and I would be happy to forward that to whoever I need to forward that to. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Going once, going twice, I will close public comment, and we will move on to Commissioner's comments. Commissioner Morris?
Just to say that on Saturday, I joined the Fellowship Temple in the Northview neighborhood, because Mother Edna Boyer is over 80, I think. And she has been the Reverend Boyer, James E. Boyer, passed away four or five years ago, and she has continued with the church there. But due to her advancing age, she's going to live with her son in Atlanta. So there was a farewell for her at the church, and it was just wonderful. And I just wanted to, you know, it's like a passing of another era that that's necessary, but, you know, sometimes we reach that age. So I just would encourage the community to write her a note and wish her well. She's been a stalwart member. And so that was, I could go on, but you don't want to hear. I always have topics I can talk about.
Good. Ms. Maude, anything?
Just to say that the folks making the comments particularly about Fake St. Patty's Day, that will be something we'll take a look at. You know, I am also on the law board and want to make sure that in the neighborhoods, we do have the proper follow-up and everything that is going on down there. They may have calmed down a little bit in Aggieville itself, but I know I did drive some streets and saw, you know, quite a bit of things happening down some different avenues and ways, and is definitely something we need to look into.
See if that works. I agree with John on that. I was hoping the Fake Patty's Day thing would die out after COVID. And I know the past two years, we haven't done the all-hands-on-deck, where we brought in, you know, state police and additional police and all that. But the way it looks, we need to reenact that plan next year and just flood the area with, you know, the fire department and forcing occupancy and the whole nine yards like we did, because it was out of control back in 2011, and we instituted that, and I think it at least kept a lid on it. It didn't stop it, you know? And I appreciate the Aggieville Business Association not promoting it. I mean, we had, I think, two bars that promoted the thing, and it does cause, you know, quite a disaster out there, maybe four. And I know that, you know, one of the TV stations managed to, you know, publicize it for free, which I didn't really appreciate either. But it's a free business environment, so the city can't really, you know, ban it. That's not going to work. But we can, you know, up the enforcement, and I think that's probably the only course of action at this point.
Yeah, I drove, as did, I assume, in the past, most commissioners. I did drive around on Saturday at three different points. In the morning, it didn't seem so bad, but there were parties already going on. And there was already, you know, starting probably Friday night itself, I would assume, but Saturday morning, there was already a lot of drinking going on. Noon, it seemed kind of, oh, nobody's in town. And I thought, well, and I told my husband, probably went home to take a nap so they can make the round in the evening. And then we went back out at 10:00, and sure enough, Raton, all of them, trash was everywhere. It was quite devastating to see, because it was private property. And that was just what I could see with my eyes. So I'm sure there was a lot more going on. And we did go around to the pavilion. Typically, that's where they shut up, set up shop, where when they arrest anybody, that's where they take them as, you know, crisis, let's say, because so many out-of-town folks come. These are not just your K-State students, but they usually come from our surrounding areas, because this is what they send off on social media and such. So I don't know who was from town or out of town, or whatever it is. And with that, also used to follow a lot of drugs that typically you don't see in Manhattan. I'm not saying we don't have, you know, drug issues here, but typically, it's more so on that day. So if you have drugs and alcohol and out-of-state students, and then you have a big old party in the City of Manhattan, nothing good comes from that. And having a new police director, and I'm sure he wasn't used to that either, you know? But I'm sure he had a lot of staff telling him how it's typically done. But it has kind of settled down the past few years, and now everybody's out and about. Kind of time to revisit and see where the enforcement needs to take place, not just for property, private property owners, but also for the safety of our students. A lot of people used to leave town, because they didn't want to be here on that weekend. Good businesses used to shut down, because they didn't want to deal with it. I did drive through our parking garage in Aggieville, and it was only half-full. And I assumed either most people were walking there, or were taking Uber, or maybe making good decisions about not driving a vehicle at that time. But I don't know what the numbers were, and I would love to hear from Adrian, our parking garage person. And there's cameras in the garage to see if anything else was taking place. And so I think it's back to being at all hands on deck once again. Thank you. Oh, and also, I wanted to say about the apartments, I didn't know much about it, but I will certainly look into it. Thank you for bringing that information to us.
Ron, could you talk about the March 16th date on that letter that the tenants got?
Yes, and so it's March 16th date, and Katie, you can help me out, but it's kind of an initial notice date. So I think there is some misperceptions, maybe, that you have to be out by that date, but it's actually kind of starting the date for where we will start working with folks to schedule a time, because we want the vacation to be orderly if the owner doesn't make adequate progress. You know, their engineering report says a number of things, but obviously, the owner currently is cooperating to some degree. And so we are wanting to work with everyone there to find suitable housing. I know K-State has indicated a willingness to help students and accommodate students. And there are other apartments that are, we're notifying about vacancies and what might be available. So that date is something that we want to use to create a schedule for folks to make an orderly transition, and as well as us providing assistance for folks out of that. But that's kind of a start date, not a, you got to be out of there by that date.
Very good. Thank you for that clarification. All right, we will move on to the consent agenda, which is items of a, normally a housekeeping nature or items that have been previously reviewed by the City Commission. A commissioner may request an item be removed for separate discussion and considered immediately following the consent agenda. Comments from the public related to any of these items will be allowed. Up to five minutes, and we won't be answering questions probably. What commissioners, do you have any items on the consent agenda you want to pull off and discuss or have questions about, comment on ahead of time?
I would like to say that I'll be voting no on 7D, which is the final reading of the Ordinance 7631 to establish the Community Support Funds Advisory Board. And that is the replacement for the Social Services Advisory Board and the Alcohol Advisory Board. They've been dissolved. And so I voted no all along on that, though this will be the final vote, I assume, on that as my little protest. And so just to-
And, uh, so just to let you know that.
All right, anybody else have anything? All right, uh, we'll open up public comment for these consent agenda items. Anybody interested in them? Nope, I will close public comment and we'll accept a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I move we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Ready and seconded by Commissioner Motta to approve the consent agenda. Please read the rule, please.
Commissioner Ready.
Yes, uh, but no on D one. Thank you.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner Motta.
Yes.
Commissioner Morse.
Yes, but no on D one.
Mayor Hassel.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero with the exception of D one, which carries three to two.
All righty, on to the general agenda. The first item is to consider funding requests from the Manhattan Area Technical College for the Advanced Technology Center. And that will be led by President Jeanne.
I get to run this? Okay. Hi, how y'all doing? Good. Okay. So thank you for the opportunity to give you some updates, but especially to talk about the future of this college and how it affects the future of Manhattan and the region. I'm in my eighth year as president, in my forty, forty or forty-first year in higher ed administration, so I'm getting up there. When I got into education, we still used film strips, slide decks, overhead transparencies and chalkboards. Commissioner Butler, you, you can remember that too. And the smell of a mimeograph ink was okay. Things have changed a lot, and it's been fun working with our faculty and staff, with the community, with employers about this college. We're starting off what we call the Building Higher Education College and Career Center Project. Providing higher education, building higher education is our buzz. We train people to get into the workforce, okay? Who we are, we have a little over eleven hundred students. Uh, eight years ago, that number was around seven fifty. We've averaged about six percent growth each year, the past five years. That even takes into account when COVID hit, and we dropped about twelve percent one year. We have over five hundred high school students taking early college classes with us this semester. Eight years ago, that number was twelve. You see in the pie chart where our students come from, and it's primarily Riley County. We do have some in the other areas, but primarily we're a home-based institution. We're a public accredited tech college. We are building up enrollment in Pot County because we have our Wamigo Center. We purchased and renovated the former Blue Stem Electric Company across from McDonald's. And we have doubled enrollment there in one year despite COVID and despite a lot of school administration changes there. Bottom left, over the last several years, we've averaged a hundred and thirty-five percent more applications than we have capacity for. And that's the key word is capacity. We graduate over four hundred per year. They enter the workforce, they earn over a thousand industry credentials or licenses. We have our own regional testing center on campus. We're the only college or university in the United States of America with seven national testing accreditations. We test for FBI, TSA and everything else under the sun at our testing center. It brings in people from all the surrounding states and much of Kansas. Average first year salary for one of our graduates is forty-five thousand plus per year. Most of our students are there for one year. More of them earn certificates than associate applied science degrees. As you know, the last few years, it's been a worker market. They have optimal chances to go into the workforce. Now, here comes the big statistic. You ready? Okay, thank you. I'm super proud of this. Eighty-six percent of our graduates stay in our service area, most of them in Riley, Potawatomi, Gary counties. I, I love K-State. We're working with them a lot. If K-State kept eighty-six percent of their graduates, we'd have a real housing problem, even more than we have. So this means we attract local people and we keep them. They stay as residents, as employees, as taxpayers and as consumers. Okay? Most of them are, have no student debt or very little. So a pretty good economic impact coming from M A T C. The return on investment as measured by Georgetown University Center for Education and Workforce. They look at net present value at ten, twenty, thirty and forty year stages of your career. They started this in twenty nineteen, they updated it in twenty twenty-two. And M A T C was number one in the state of Kansas among all public colleges and universities at twenty years out. We were number two at ten years out. At thirty and forty years out, we're number two. The only institution that has a better record than we do on net present value thirty and forty years out in the state of Kansas is the University of Kansas because they have a med school. Otherwise, M A T C would be number one. So we keep people in the area, and they're making good wages. They have incredible consumer and economic impact. Besides our current programs, these are the things that we've been asked to do by employers, looking at the job market in this area. And we have to look at Kansas labor data. We are obliged to help promote, uh, training for high wage, high demand and/or critical need and/or emerging occupations that require less than a bachelor's degree. So I'll talk more about our existing programs in a moment, but for instance, we're trying to ramp up childcare. It's not hard to ramp up the program from a curricular standpoint. I have to find money for a teacher, but I'm also kind of frightful, am I going to get any students because of what it pays? And we all know childcare is a huge issue in the area. I'm constant contact with local folks because again, can we push it where more mothers can get the training to run in-home daycares? Everybody needs it, but again, I'm concerned, are we going to get students in sufficient numbers to justify the cost? With CDL, I'm working with a nearby tech college to bring CDL training here. They already have it. I don't really want to start it up myself, but it's needed. So we're looking at a program to try to bring that in here within the next twelve to eighteen months. We're working with a local business on possible space that'll allow us to start up diesel mechanics. Again, I have the curriculum, and again, it's needed by many companies in this area, but we need space. Cybersecurity, we teach some of it right now in our Information Networking Tech Program, but we intend to add a separate track that builds off of networking tech into cybersecurity. No later than twenty twenty-five. We're actually building the curriculum right now. Data analytics curriculum we have in place, that will start next year. That's based off curriculum developed by Train, the HVAC company, that has industry credentials that we can provide even to high school students. We want to start a plumbing program in our new building. We'll get to that in a minute. Electrician training will start in Wamigo. Uh, we have room there at our center. That will start next year. I've been asked about many healthcare programs, many imaging tech, respiratory tech. Again, it takes an investment in space to do those things. At Wamigo, we offer general education. We're already offering CNA, EMT training. Uh, building three over there was just finished, the punch list. We're working with Caterpillar right now to stand up more welding capacity there within a few weeks. I mentioned the electrician training, then also on our to-do list over there is auto technology and LPN nursing to expand that capacity. Our current campus is on the left minus, these little rectangular buildings here, many of you are at our groundbreaking, those are all gone now. They were knocked down during November and December, and I stood outside several times watching how much fun that guy had knocking those down. We took dirt, we took, uh, soil from this area and put it here for the soil buildup. We needed to let it settle. We worked with our architect BBN and our contractor for our overall project, BHS, to look at how can we expand for space that we need using our existing property? Because property is at a premium in the area. So phase one, right here, which is underway, is the Advanced Technology Center. Phase two will go on the corner of Reeth and Dickens and feature expanded capacity and improved training for healthcare. Phase three adds on a welcome center here and renovates our existing building, which was built about sixty years ago by Brent Bowman. That will take us from currently eighty-six thousand square feet of space minus these up to this and keep it all on our property. And I want to thank city staff who've worked with BHS, Oaltz and other people we've had involved to lay this out and make sure it would work. Another look at the master plan. Currently, I have the smallest facility footprint of any public college or university in the state. Tech ed is the hot ticket. Um, our growth speaks to that. Tech colleges are the only sector of higher education in the state that has grown the last five years. The kids have figured this out. People have figured out, I want to make money. I don't want student debt. Go learn how to be a welder, a nurse, an auto technician, a computer specialist. We need to do this for several reasons. To increase our capacity to help area high school students, Fort Riley, the exiting soldiers and family to keep more of them here, and also to partner with K-State. There are things we have in discussions with them that I think can help with some of their enrollment concerns. They've addressed many of them, but we know that we are a magnet to attract some students who may be interested in K-State but not ready. And we can play a role with that. So all these things combined help us build workforce for this area. Keeping more soldiers and families is fantastic. It's a built-in specialized workforce. And with biom manufacturing, more IT, the possibility of getting into the semiconductor business, those are jobs those folks are going to be interested in. Phase one is this building, the Advanced Technology Center. Forty-seven thousand square feet prefab steel. When, uh, Carl Ice visited our campus for the first time several months ago, we took him on a tour and we got done, and he said, "You have no wasted space." I said, "I can't afford wasted space." Same thing when Senator Moran came by a few weeks ago. Said, "This is incredible." I said, "Yeah, we, we use every inch we have." The new building for construction tech will take us in a capacity from the current twenty-four students up to forty-eight. HVAC currently, we're limited to eighteen. This will double. Plumbing, new program. Industrial Engineering Tech, new program this year, this will take us from twelve up to twenty to twenty-four students. Biom manufacturing, the curriculum's being designed in consultation with Scorpius and with K-State. We'll have a capacity between twenty-four and thirty students in that program. Electric power and distribution is where we teach people to be electric linemen. That capacity will not increase because of safety issues with that program. But that's twenty-two students. Over here is Critical Environment Tech. We're the only college or university in the country with that program. We designed it the past several years as NBAF was being constructed, as we worked with the contractors building NBAF and with K-State and with BRI. The purpose with that lab and almost all of these other programs is to teach people how to take care of high-tech containment to clean room facilities. The researchers and scientists that K-State will produce for NBAF and for BRI, they're great at what they do. But if something goes wrong with the air system or the water system or another control system, they're not the ones to fix it. That's what we teach with this program. We teach how to work with the water systems, air systems, security and control systems. So this sets M A T C up, working again with K-State, with the Chamber, with the Greater Manhattan Economic Partnership, to have a stronger way to sell our community for these companies. When Scorpius came on campus before the announcement, and I'd been working with him for several months, but when they came on campus and saw our labs, their jaws dropped. The companies that have talked with K-State and us since then, they come on, they see what we have related to that facility side with Critical Environment Tech and Industrial Engineering Tech. They, the same comment is, no one else has this. This is fantastic. So we have developed programs to reinforce what K-State is doing in the, in the way of animal health, the Kansas City Animal Health Corridor and more. So this building sets the stage for a whole new history of Manhattan Tech. A few renditions of what the building will look like. Again, this will go where those modular buildings were sitting. There it is in daytime. Looks a lot better than the modular units. Inside, we'll have one central hallway in front, good space for students and faculty and employers to move around. Biom manufacturing will be fairly open lab to be designed and filled with equipment from Scorpius. They've already made the commitment to help us equip it. The other spaces for the other programs, again, we have most of the programs in place and the equipment in place. Uh, the story in the mercury was off a little bit tonight. We see that this is going to add at least three hundred students by twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-seven. We will add at least seven more faculty and staff. It'll increase our revenues. Our current overall economic impact of the college for this area is just over twenty million. This will almost double it. Okay? When we talk about graduates, these are our projections. Current number of graduates per program where we have programs. This is what we think will happen by twenty twenty-six if we can get the building up and running. These are the current collective earnings of the graduates on an average year. This is what it will jump to. None of these occupations will pay less than fifty thousand a year. And that's for probably a one-year certificate program. I don't know about you, but my first contract to teach high school back in the Stone Age was for about eleven thousand dollars. The tech colleges do not have local taxing authority. And I don't want it, but I need help. What I've put here are community colleges near us or about our size. They do have taxing authority, plus tuition fees, plus state appropriations. None of the tech colleges have anything in this line. This is what I get. And I keep being asked to do more, and we've been performing. You've seen our performance. But I need help to sustain and grow what's needed to make this area keep growing economically and for community development. Phase one will cost about sixteen point three million. And we've had our estimators look at the high side. I'm pretty sure it's going to come in a little lower. We have one point eight million from the state in an ARPA grant that has to have a match. We've matched most of it. So far, no donation or grant we've received for the project has been less than six figures. I really would like some three and four and five figure donations, but so far they've all been six. Hard to turn those down. Kansas State Bank, KS Bank and Landmark Bank are working with us to help finance the project. To close the gap so we can finance it is one point four million. That allows us to get construction underway and finish this in one year. Unlike some other entities, we can move pretty quick. This allows us to stand up classes as early as next summer. Scorpius, I know, has changed some of their timelines, but still, when they come and need workers, the projected list of workers they provided to us in K-State, about fifty-two to fifty-three percent of the workers they need come through us in the form of biom manufacturing techs, IT people and facilities people. And I would be glad to answer any questions. Your support for this investment is critical to the college and I think to the community. I don't intend to ever come back asking for taxing authority, but on occasion, as you have in the past, you've helped us out. Sedgwick County provides an annual allocation to Wichita Tech of about seven hundred and fifty thousand a year to support the aerospace industry work that Wichita Tech does. That's one example I can give you of a municipality or a county that is trying to help the tech college. The legislature, and I, I talked for all the tech colleges with the legislature, they are trying to help as well. But they were blunt with me this week in the House Higher Ed Budget Committee. What are your cities and counties putting skin in the game to help you? Don't just keep coming to the state. I think there are ways to work this because we're an economic development engine for the area. And I'll stop there and take your comments and questions.
Who, um, how did you, uh, do the buildings over in Wamigo? It did, how did you pay for those? Did you have any kind of, somebody who buys them, owns them and you ran them from them or?
There's a company that spec, I think it's called Capital Finance, uh, don't quote me on that. They work with municipal entities to provide financing. Uh, again, those buildings were up and running, so it was purchase and renovation. Plus, we've put in about eight hundred thousand of our own dollars off capital outlay. Plus, we've put in about eight hundred thousand of our own dollars off capital outlay and donations to pay for those renovations, but we will be paying that loan back over the next ten years for those facilities. Right now, we have put in about one point six million of our own money into this project besides the ARPA funds.
And so if you, so the banks will loan you the seventy percent once you get the rather thirty percent figured out.
Right.
And you're a one point four million short.
Right.
All right.
Question for you on the, have you gotten any funding from Wamigo or Potawatomi County?
We have received assistance from the city of Wamigo and several companies and employers over there. I'm talking to Pot County Commission next week.
So you say how much you've gotten from Wamigo?
From the city in terms of in-kind and some other help, probably two hundred thousand.
Have you ever approached or gotten anything from Gary County?
Gary County would like us to do things over there, but they have not been as supportive in terms of guaranteeing us students or a way to pay back any investment we would make there.
So what about Riley County?
Commissioner Ford wants to visit with us. He's been looking at some ideas. We're also working with the school district on how they put some skin in the game as well.
So I guess just to run my other commissioners, one of the things I'm looking at with this is that, you know, not all being the city of Manhattan, the combination where we get the other entities to, to come in. So, I mean, we talk about our bond rating and what's happened to it and the debt that we have. And we often hear from some of these other groups about, look what they've done and they don't have that same thing. Well, I think we need them to partner with us to say if everyone comes in, you know, it's not as big a burden on any single entity.
So you're, the one point four would be some combination. I, if you get it from the city or a million from us, two hundred from there, two hundred from there, as long as you get the one point four.
Right. The timing, the timing is what's more critical.
Right.
The financial institutions, if I, if I get some kind of commitment on the one four, there's, there's time to work out how it gets paid. It doesn't necessarily have to all be at once, but then we can kind of do a patch loan to get us going. But I, I fully intend to get some skin in the game from the other entities you've mentioned.
So why is the timeline so important?
Because of when Scorpius ramps up and they need workforce and I need space to get them going.
We last heard, we had several meetings with them. They don't look like they're doing groundbreaking anytime soon.
I understand that, but it's going to take us some time to get their equipment in place, get the curriculum in place to educate the people and have that first cohort that they're going to need in place. We'll have this, if we get it going, it'll be ready for classes summer of twenty-four. That means the first cohort of biom manufacturing techs wouldn't be available until spring or fall of twenty-five. And they're going to want those workers in place.
I understand. I just haven't seen a shovel yet.
Yeah.
So that might even take a year.
Commissioner, just on, on that note, we, Mayor Haddasal and I participated in a Scorpius briefing today and they are on track to open in 2025. It is further back than what the original, but.
December, January?
No specific date, summer, mid 2025.
So, and I still don't know till I see the shovel. So, because those dates keep moving.
But besides Scorpius, all the contractors around here need more people working in construction. We need more people in HVAC, these other programs. It's not just biotech that this facility will help. It reinforces a lot of blue collar positions that feed this region.
I don't deny that. What I'm saying is what we're seeing on paper, we're not seeing around us because we are investing. We are annexing. We are talking fire departments. We are talking to counties. We have all kinds of agreements with all kinds of people.
And that's, this is also an investment. But it does do other things besides just Scorpius.
And so I have a few questions. What happened to the nursing program? Cause you said you were starting another nursing program. You used to have a nursing program.
You have nursing.
You still have nursing at M A T C and you're starting a different one?
It's to expand the number of students we can take into nursing by expanding an LPN cohort at Wamigo.
Okay, so LPN.
We have LPN on campus plus RN now. But it's to grow more capacity.
We have, I believe a memorandum of understanding with the city, with our city university fund, which have, we utilize that where we take large chunks of money and now we put it into the edge program. But we don't have anything of that sort with M A T C or city. Is that something we can look into as far as city staff or Ron or anybody else?
So I'm not sure, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but hard to correlate. So the main revenue that comes into the city university funds are franchise fees and sales taxes that occur on campus. Tech College really doesn't have any franchise fees or sales taxes on their campus. So I'm not sure the mechanism for that to create the, to create that revenue stream.
Yeah, I think that's what I'm trying to see because, I mean, it, it seems, you know, like a call for action from the city, you know, we need money within and time is so important, but not a taxing authority because we're going to be the bad guys.
Understand. But my students, as the data shows, my students stay in the area. They're buying homes, cars, groceries. They're being employees for the businesses and paying taxes. And I'm getting on a regular basis, nothing.
And so from our perspective, I think we put in, is it eight hundred thousand dollars for what the units from Fort Riley? I don't remember. Was that a loan program? Was that in?
And that was satisfied.
But, but it was a loan is what I'm saying. It wasn't just like given to you like a blank check of some kind.
In a forgivable loan, economic development is a, you know, portion of it or all of it. I'm not here to argue how to be structured. I'm trying to get a building up and ready to expand the workforce.
And that's why we're having this discussion. Because we don't, I, I don't disagree with the mission and what it brings to the community. Of course, we're here to talk about the one point four million.
Right.
Ask, and that's, that's why this conversation's happening and to figure out how we can best, figure out how to use taxpayer funds and make sure we are being equally open to other people's ideas when they come forward with these things. So I think there's still more conversations to have. I don't know about the timeline that you prefaced here or how fast this can go and how much it would be.
Well, it doesn't have to all be a lump sum. There's, there's room to maneuver that. It's more of the commitment that this will happen over some time, so much per year. There's room to, to do that.
Yeah, and I think that's the discussion we need to have. I think the proposal made by Commissioner Mata is something we need to look into to see what the other communities are doing and see what our role is in that piece. Like I said, we don't disagree with the outcome, but, but how to go about that. And the other piece to this is, it says here fiscal impact from existing cash balances or part of the 2023 sales tax. So I don't know, are we looking at EcoDevo funds or?
One scenario we talked with Jim and Harry about was an annual approach, much like you get from other outside agencies during your budget season. Then it can be considered as part of the 2024 budget. We can talk about a variety of ways to structure this and certain amounts per year. Jim's emphasis has been about a commitment. That commitment, then he can take and leverage potentially other commitments. But this summer could be the opportunity to talk about what to fund and how much in 2024 and beyond. The commitment really you all would be making is for that next budget year. But there could be a total that you agree upon to consider on an annual basis. You, you'll have a hard time not doing that as a governing body, being, being somewhat restricted in what you can commit to. But the 2024 budget could be an opportunity, much like you consider outside agency requests from ATA, DMI, ABA, the Art Center. You, you consider a lot of those. We're obviously just created a board tonight that's going to be coming to you for social services. So it's a good time of year to have that conversation, see what you're willing to commit to. But that's one alternative we've talked with Jim about in terms of an approach. EcoDevo Fund, when we established that funding total of sixty-five million, we used ten million for our one percent tax as a baseline. We took that ten million basically times one point three. We have a one percent tax and then we get a portion of a half cent sales tax that comes in from the county. That generates roughly six point five million dollars a year at and a one percent generating ten million for the entire year. Twenty twenty-one, we generated twelve point one million dollars. Twenty twenty-two, we generated thirteen point one million dollars on the one cent. So it is growing. Even if we take the 2022 total and run it out for ten years, we'll generate about four hundred thousand more dollars a year. Those, those are data points that need to work their way into seventy percent, the twenty percent and the ten percent. But it's evident there's additional dollars that will be available beyond what we forecasted when we put that question out in November of 2020. So there's flexibility. I mean, I, I hate to forecast increases in sales tax because I've watched them stay flat, but, but it's happening. So we need to readjust, let you all know what's coming in, what those percentages mean and how you can utilize those dollars. We've talked about the, the twenty percent or the roughly one point three million a year that's there for EcoDevo. Totals thirteen million over ten years based on that first estimate. Eight million of it, we've talked about going towards Scorpius. And the other five million going towards the contracts for the Chamber. The annual ED contract of roughly a half million dollars. There, there's going to be more than that thirteen million. But it is an annual realization. It's very difficult to project beyond what you see right in front of you because it can go flat or even dip. But we've obviously seen a lot of inflation. We've seen a lot of things increase in cost, but we've also seen more activity in, in the community. We hope that growth is there. We, we anticipate it'll be to a degree, but I, I'm going to be very cautious suggesting to you all that it's going to increase by two, three, four, five percent a year. We've obviously seen it grow over, over the years, but again, we've seen years where it's. So that's kind of an update. We'll give you more of an update during budget season, but it's an alternative to come back and, and talk with M A T C as part of your outside agencies. That's one alternative.
I think, sorry, I was going to say, I think that's good information to have, to have more conversations about it without committing to something immediately right now, but we are interested in, in looking at all of the options. And maybe if you're looking at incremental or whatever it might be, to see what that looks like on the, on the other end of this. But if we do an economic development, take funds out of economic development, I would like to see the actual proposal that we have, typically that application process that we have in place because that's kind of our oversight. That's kind of our, that's how we have either clawbacks or some kind to make sure that it's not just a blank check with, with nothing adhering to it. So those are conversations to be had in the future. Thank you for the information, Jason.
You know, the data in the letter you have and in the PowerPoint, there, there's targets there we plan to hit. So you're, you know, we're growing more jobs, we're growing more income. That's what we used before with the other arrangements you provided to the college. I'm fully in favor of trying to get the county and the school district on board as well. The trouble is, is I talk to each one of you, everybody's waiting for the other one to move first. I need somebody to put the challenge out there, to put the dare out there. Frankly, that's, I'm sorry if I sound frustrated or negative. I don't mean to be, but everybody's been telling me for years how great we are. It's needed. Support's not going to be a problem. We need this facility in order to help, again, not just Scorpius. You look at the contractors, plumbing, the industrial engineering tech. These are good paying jobs, but they're needed in this region for economic growth. So I'm looking for somebody to step up and say, here's the challenge to the rest of you. We're going to do this.
Here's the thing, I was saying response to what Jason said, because some of our discussions internal amongst ourselves here. Because I hear everything you're saying, but I'd still want to get some projection, if we were to make a decision on using some funds, to say, based on we know what, right today, what we have committed from Scorpius, what our projections are, here we can look and say, this is how much money. So when we make the decision, if we were to vote on something and say, I'm going to vote on it based on these numbers. Some happens to those numbers and they go up or down, at least you could say, this was the basis. But I can't make the basis off just a conversation in a, in a, in a meeting about where we might, where we might go.
Absolutely. I just wanted to give you a frame of reference. In the event you're interested in, in considering this, we can provide you a, a number of ways to fund this. That's one.
Yeah. The other, when it comes to just doing it like the outside agencies, to me, that's just a line item in the budget which affects the mill levy, which affects everything else.
None of those impact the mill levy, just so you know.
Well, depends on total amount we're going to spend.
You're, you're not inaccurate. You can look at it different ways. A lot of transient guest tax funds, those outside agencies. So ABA, DMI. I mean, there, there are certain funds that are going in certain directions.
Right, but net, net, you got so much money.
Understood, yeah.
To, to go. As far as the challenge, we got to figure out our numbers and see what we want to do. We could possibly, you know, rise to that challenge, but be contingent on someone else coming into the game. In other words, you don't pony up, this doesn't stay on the table.
But I, I just, I need that, somebody to pony up to, to make that dare to the other entities.
Jim, I wanted to ask you, you mentioned that the goal is to finish in one year. That is the whole of the construction project or just phase one?
Just phase one.
Phase one?
Yeah.
And so on the next phase, will you be back?
Well, I might be. I mean, our, our, you know, the board renewed my contract for five years last summer. I'm getting up there. Right now, my focus is getting phase one done because we know the immediate need with those industries and that workforce. Healthcare is a burning issue. There are different ways to address it depending upon, again, what will the healthcare entities that are in the community be willing to do? Sharing space could be an option. Phase two right now is a dream. But it also is a dream of what could be in terms of, again, if we start adding programs related to radiology tech, CT imaging technician, those kind of things that are supportive for the healthcare when you're trying to draw better physicians into town and better healthcare in the area. That's going to take space and an investment. I think in the talks I've had with the different healthcare entities and with some of the politicians at the federal level, there's different ways to approach that for that facility.
Well, I know with nurses, they're driving a lot of miles and they're getting a lot higher salaries because they're willing to commute than they sometimes do locally. I, I know there's a big need for nurses, so.
Covid, covid has had the biggest impact on healthcare across the country, not just in Kansas or here, but our application numbers have dropped for a variety of reasons related to the pandemic. We're starting to see the numbers come back up in the most recent cohort. The other thing with all of these programs is the validation of what we teach in terms of the students earning their license to practice nursing, the students getting industry credentials that come from a third party, not from us. And we kind of lead the way with that, so it's, there's that independent validation of the quality of our programs and what we're turning out.
I know that we like to use our, I mean, we've seen our economic development money sometimes go to companies coming here. And then we have the discussions about using the economic development money in, locally for local entities. And I, I support this. I want to see us, I, I want to use the economic development money just flat out. That's what my expectation would be because that's what this is. And so I don't, if it, we didn't use economic development money, I would want to have a totally new conversation.
Yeah, I got a number of comments. One, you know, I agree with John. It'd be nice we could get some of these other agencies to, to kick in, you know, Pot County, the ones on your pie chart. But Linda, you're a big fan of the Flint Hills Regional Council and they're always pushing economic development. So maybe you could just dust this project with them.
I'm a big fan.
And say, what can, what can you guys pony up or help with grants or something of that nature? So, so I do think we need to.
So I so I do think we need to get, you know, everybody uh in the game. I I'm 100% in support of it because I believe that we look at the whole economic development structure. And I've been looking at that for 10 years and really haven't been that impressed with our money. Just don't think we're getting the the return that everybody projects. But but it seems to me that, you know, all these companies that wanna come in here, their problem is workforce. And how are you gonna get the workforce? And it's not being produced by K-State because those four-year degrees are not what we need. And so the, you know, the slogan you've got there, you know, higher education is right on. And and I think this is one of the foundations for making all those other projects the Chamber wants to do work. Because we've got to create the guys that can do plumbing and HVAC and all of that. So when I look at the priority for economic development, if I had to make a list, and I'm I'm big on priorities, I'd have to move this pretty much to the top because because I don't see how the rest of it's gonna work. That includes Scorpion. I mean, if they can't get their workforce, their whole project is gonna collapse. And so this is really one of the, one of the foundations. Now, how much can we commit? That's gonna depend on what city staff can do. Now, I I don't wanna commit any mill levy to it. You know, like like I worked at Community College for 20 years and yep, they had a mill levy, but but I don't wanna go there. But but I think, uh, you know, a- as Linda said, the economic development funds uh look lucrative, especially as I reviewed the sales tax receipts that Finance sent us. It looks like, you know, things are on the upside, we're getting more. And again, I also agree, Jason, we can't, we can't bank on that. But right now, we got a trend in that direction. So we can, you know, we can make our uh, you know, our our judgments uh, you know, based on that. And and it doesn't necessarily have to be a case of, you know, here's a check for 1.4 million. You know, it it can be phased in and, you know, as you said. And I think, uh, you know, the last time we committed funds, you know, you did do an economic development request. And I think the numbers there sort of support that. I mean, and when you when you think about jobs developed, we've given millions of dollars to companies and they produce 20 jobs. Well, just on your PowerPoint chart, it shows seven new instructors. Well, you can count that as seven jobs. And then if if 86, if those numbers are accurate, and I'll take them as face value, if 86% of the graduates actually stay here, well, that's a big boom. And and all these companies are having problems, you know, hiring mechanics and and all the kind of things that M A T C produces. And K-State doesn't produce that. And so I'm I'm, I I wanna figure out a way to make this work. But I also think that, uh, you know, it's it's a regional thing too. So everybody else needs to, needs to help us out to a certain extent because uh people do get upset, as John says, uh, you know, Manhattan funding everything. And and, you know, we talk region, but when it comes to money, it's always, hey, how about city pony up? But but I do think, uh, you know, agree, we're gonna have to take the lead and push it. So I'm I'm in favor of uh supporting it to the extent we can.
Well, I, yeah, I I agree, it's a obviously a needed thing. I'm I'm curious, that 2 million sum ARPA money that we got sitting around is, is any, can we use some of that, for example? Because we got no bright ideas for that so far and we're have to earmark it for something. And and I don't know, refresh my memory, what we could potentially use that on.
We talked about a fire station.
Okay.
Being the the source, um, you know, 2.6, your your fire station's gonna cost more than that. There's other ways to fund a fire station. Uh, but, you know, I, you can sit there and speculate on the full 45 million that's going for 70% of public infrastructure too, Mayor. And and you can replace that with other debt and other ways to pay for that debt. But when we went out and we talked to you all about North Campus in Aggieville, we talked about this sales tax actually covering that and not going to another source to issue that debt. That's the flexibility you all have, though. I mean, we can all sit here and say it's committed. It's committed because that's where you all want us to spend that money. So you don't have to issue debt and raise taxes or, you know, come up with another scenario. That could always shift over time, though. Valuation increases, sales tax increases, gives you more flexibility to do things in the out years. You know, right now is not a great time to suggest we're gonna use that money somewhere else because it it is dedicated and looking in the future to cover debt payments. But I do think there's flexibility in how the commission wants to do things in the future. You've all set it up. It, you know, the 2020 question that got passed, the revenue's starting to come in. Every year, we'll look at that. Um, the other thing about debt, it takes longer to actually hit the uh the sheet, the the actual payments come due. I mean, just as as an example, this will be the first year we actually pay anything for North Campus Corridor. We haven't put any revenue into that yet because it's been temporarily noted. We've analyzed the the interest. We are now finally going to pay a principal payment on North Campus Corridor. You know how long ago that was when we were in here debating College Avenue and that intersection of College and Kimball. That, but that's the delay that happens with our construction. It also opens up more revenue to come in during that period of time. So I it's always hard to predict just exactly what to do. But in theory, yes, we have dedicated those revenues to Aggieville and North Campus Corridor primarily to cover those projects that we have been approving for the last four years. And there's multiple of them.
Ron, you wanna add?
Yeah, I would just uh add that I appreciate that that discussion and and concept from Jason. The other aspect is so that report you just got today is the last, is a December payment. So that's the old tax. The new tax check doesn't even start till next month, which is the January sales tax. So, which gives us a little bit more balance from the old tax too. So I think we can put together a combination of sources uh that some could be grants, some could be forgivable loan. That's kind of been our history with the tech college as well. That uh can serve some of the immediate need and some pledges to do more. That also will serve as a challenge grant.
Yeah, I think I think it's good to look at all the options to how to get to the number we needed, whether it's 500,000, 1 million. I don't know what it looks like, but to to keep those conversations going. I do wanna know, um, if you said Scorpius is not going to really do a whole lot as far as um a shovel or anything till 2025, if I heard you.
No, 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 no.
So no, they'll be open.
They wanna hire people and be open summer of 2025.
Okay, so let's say that target moves, okay? Let's say all of that. So when are they gonna start building then?
Uh, so we're looking at development agreement within a couple of months and then construction's starting shortly thereafter. So probably sometime mid, late summer, I'm guessing.
The reason I ask is I was wondering if our resolution for the 8 million has a deadline on it.
We we haven't issued a resolution for the 8 million. You haven't even considered a development agreement yet.
No, but I thought we signed something.
You issued a commitment, uh uh, an intent to issue, but you have not issued that 8 million.
No, we haven't issued it, but we signed something as to this won't, this will be safe for them.
You you passed a resolution of intent.
That's what I'm saying, resolution of intent.
You expressed an intent.
If they they do this, we'll do that.
Yeah, it it didn't guarantee anything and the development agreement terms have yet to be agreed upon or even fully negotiated yet.
I was just thinking, does that commitment, uh, at least a verbal commitment, have any kind of deadline on it?
No.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure.
Yep.
But the other thing on that agreement, you know, it was the resolution was based on them building this massive building at once, and now they're gonna phase it in. So it's not like we're gonna write them a check for 8 million.
Correct.
In one day, and and it may end up being less than 8 million, uh, depending upon what their phasing is. So we've got a lot of flexibility.
Very, very much so. And we we intend to keep those terms in the agreement for you all to consider.
And there also will likely be a property tax revenue stream from that because they're not gonna wanna enact that property tax abatement till they've, they're complete and fully loaded. And it'll take a, with several phases of development. And they they still think that they wanna be fully employed and fully invested by 2026 or 2027 for additional phases. They're already starting design on phase two as they're finishing the deal for phase one, so.
And they would probably wanna, are you saying they might wanna wait till this, like the second building and stuff is even complete before they start the tax abatement?
Right.
At all?
They wanna get the full value of that abatement, so.
So we we potentially get property tax on the first
Initially.
200 million worth of construction.
It 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 all ties back to that county appraiser and how they're gonna look at this property. The other thing to consider is the the total acreage that has been annexed into the city. Uh, we're more familiar with what Riley County Appraisers do because of obviously everything that goes on in Riley County and we've watched history unfold. It's difficult for us to sit here and even guesstimate where Pot County Appraiser's going to be. I do think they'll end up hiring an outside firm that'll actually evaluate that site. So more than likely, somebody from Kansas City area will come in and look at that site. But I just, I put out there, it's 50 acres of land that is going to start to be developed inside the city, inside the county, will likely have a lot bigger value than the ag use today. Even the undeveloped property will have a different uh potential for value, which can generate revenue as well for the taxing jurisdictions.
No, I think I I I I think I understand all of the logistics and the financials that are involved. But in the meantime, we still have a fire station, we still have infrastructure, we still have needs that we need to pay for. And all of those prices are elevating as well. Uh, and so when I look at this type of a commitment, the the 8 million is one, but then we have a fire station, which is what, 10 million? I don't know. How much do do one of those cost?
We're probably looking in the three and a half to four million range.
For the structure of it, not the employees?
Oh, yeah, we haven't even talked about the number of employees. Yep, absolutely. And that's an annual cost.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions right now or we'll maybe see if there's anybody in the public wants to comment on this?
If I can make two other comments.
Two other comments.
Uh, back to Scorpius, uh, in addition to the lab equipment and the curriculum, they've already talked to us about full ride scholarships to give our students in exchange for working for them. So they're making some pretty major commitments. The other thing I'd like you to know is that uh the commitment we have from B H S is their largest single donation they've ever made, and it's for this project. So again, we're getting good community buy-in. There is some urgency to try to nail down the gap. So again, probably the last thing for me is, you've gotta do your due diligence. If there's something that you can structure at some point that could be that challenge to the county and to the school district, I would love to get them to put the skin in the game. But again, I need somebody to make that first move to say, we will if you will. So, thank you as always, thank you for your support. And if you're not busy tomorrow night, we're hosting business after hours.
Already signed up.
Sounds like a city-county-county meeting sometime, I don't know.
All right, is there a open up for a public comment on this uh discussion we're having about the Manhattan Area Technical Col- Colleges request for some money? All right, we'll close public comment. Um, yeah, I would, I would like us to, if it's, they need 1.4. Personally, I I think we could, yeah, maybe go up to like a million or something if we, and then hopefully the other people could fill in the blank after that. Maybe, that's just me talking. Tell them the mayor said, ah, maybe a million.
I can tell you right now, if the city can do that, I've got the other covered.
800,000, I meant to say.
The mayor only has one vote.
Oh, okay. I've got it, so, all right. Okay, we'll see what we can do.
So we're talking about a letter of intent, a letter of commitment. And uh do we intend to do anything uh to um stronger than schedule a city-county-county meeting in six months?
Yes, I I heard direction here from a majority that wants to proceed with some level of funding. And we're gonna bring back some alternatives to you and work with uh Jim and his folks to piece together portions of that. If it's out of ED, we'll get the application going. If it's uh excess sales tax, it'll be all packaged together. If it's a, if it's a forgivable loan, uh, we'll work uh in the next few few weeks to try to get that done because I know he's ready to go.
No, I agree with that and also agree with the mayor, maybe not necessarily on the exact numbers, but the structure to be that way, that, you know, we're not gonna pay the full freight, but we make a commitment given that others come in to fill the gap.
Very good, have a good night, we'll see you tomorrow. All right, next item on the general agenda is the discussion of recommended changes to community developments, development review fees and city clerk and open records request fees. Can hardly wait, okay. Who's first?
CD's first.
Can you hear me?
Kristen, are you on?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Are you presenting or anything?
I was just gonna intro it and then hand it over to you and John. I just, I don't have slides, I'm just gonna make a few comments.
All right, well.
Okay, perfect. Evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Kristen Dolph, Assistant to the City Manager. Um, Jason was before you the end of January, kind of presenting, oh, now I'm looking at my giant face. Okay. Presenting um just our overview, and I wanted to intro this item. I'm the one that's been working with the departments to um look at this giant list of 600-plus fees. So what we are doing is we are meeting with departments prioritizing this extensive work, especially for legal, based on organizational priority. As we work through these items, we'll be bringing them to you in groups. Um, tonight, we have the two in that first group that were vetted and ready to go. Um, so with that, we have John that's gonna be talking about development uh review fees. And then Jared's gonna talk about open records. But I just kinda wanted to preview the status of of all of that. And we will be back with multiple items as we move throughout um the year in the different departments. And I'll just turn it over to them now.
Good evening, John Adam, Assistant Director of Community Development. And thank you, Jared, for the opportunity to go first. Which one do I hit? Oh, it is, okay. All right. Uh, so, good evening, uh, just to set the stage, the current fee schedule that we are working with was adopted in November of 1987. Uh, we have not changed any of those fees uh in that time. Couple of years ago, or a year or so ago, when we adopted the new development code, we, uh, at the end of '21, uh, we adapted those fees to some of the new processes, but we didn't change them, we didn't raise them. Because we told you then, uh, we'll, we're gonna take a look at them. Uh, we're gonna do some analysis and come back to you with a set of fees for you to consider. So, like Kristen said, we happen to be the first ones in this whole big process um in the city to get done and get it ready. So here's a draft for your consideration, for your feedback and questions. Um, our starting point, uh, we surveyed staff in other departments that we work with who are involved in the development review process to see how much time that they typically put in on various review types. Then using the midpoint of pay ranges um for those respondents and for their jobs, uh, we were able to estimate a typical cost in terms of staff time. We didn't do this to try to recoup the cost through the fees, obviously, but rather to get a picture of how much staff time goes into these land use reviews. What we really found useful was seeing what other cities, um, where we stood in comparison to other cities that are in Kansas and a couple of others in neighboring states. Um, on this chart, the yellow bar represents the range of fees of the sampled cities. The white bar shows the median fee in the sample range. The blue diamond indicates where our fees stand in relation to those. As you can see, we tend toward the lower end of most of those ranges. Uh, one interesting thing that we learned from doing this comparison was that several cities have fee schedules. Sorry, that vary um according to um scale or subtype of the development. One example is a conditional use permit review. Um, it's a different fee for a brand-new construction as opposed to reusing an existing building. Um, other types of review have graduated fees uh based on acreage. These typically appear um for some cities for rezonings, subdivisions and PUDs. So.
John?
Yes.
This is Commissioner Ready. So just to go back to that slide, so uh I saw it on our document on my PowerPoint on my laptop, but here I don't see it. So the blue diamond, can you just say, uh, there's no legend here, what the blue diamond means and what the yellow bars mean and uh the spacing in between the yellow bars?
Up at the top, there's some numbers.
Yep.
Right, I see.
So the yellow bar.
Is the diamond us?
Yes, the blue diamond is us. The yellow bar um is the range of the different fees that we'd sampled. Um, so from the low end, the lowest one to the highest one of the sample cities. The white bar was the median value. Um, so where did, 50% of the samples are below that line, 50% are above that line.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Actually, let me skip ahead to that. So we're looking at these comparisons and considering how complex some review types are based in part on the amount of staff time we spent in review. We are putting forward a draft fee schedule for your comments. Um, this schedule introduces the graduated fee structure, or eighth graduated fee structure that we see in other places to account for uh some of the complexities brought about by the size of development or zoning districts. Um, it also accounts for the type of app. Um, it also accounts for the type of applicant, generally somebody that is seeking an exception to the setback standards, so they can put an addition under their house, is a single family, single-family homeowner. Uh, it doesn't seem quite right to charge them, uh, a high fee for that relief valve that we have. Uh, and besides, most of those cases are not very complex, so it just didn't justify having a big fee. Um, now I'm gonna back up. How do the draft fees stack up against time cost? Uh, time cost is expressed by the darker bars, um, sorry, uh, time cost is expressed by the lighter bars on here, um, the proposed fees, or the draft fees are the darker bars on that. So, um, still a fraction of expenditures, sometimes it's a very small fraction of those expenditures. All right. And then jumping ahead, or going to the last one, um, in comparison to other cities, we would be much more on par with them. So in this one, same scale, the green diamond, um, are the draft fees in comparison to those. The gray diamonds are the current fees that we have. Um, there are some obvious standouts that you're gonna see in this, um, or you see on this slide. Um, there's a reason for them. Subdivision review is one of the most time-consuming processes that we do, and it involves work from CD, public works, finance, uh, fire, and legal when we're doing subdivisions. This draft fee is obviously well above the median of, median of comparison cities. What surprises me is that the median fee is so low. It makes me think that those other towns are not appropriately accommodating, or are taking into account the complexity and reflecting it in their fee schedule, or maybe it's broken up in different ways, I'm not sure. The really big standout, PUD preliminary plan. There's a reason for that, too. Um, one is, PUDs always involve at least two reviews. One is the rezoning to PUD itself, the second, it quite of, it quite often involves also a subdivision. Sometimes it also involves a site plan, development plan review. That's three processes that we're rolling into one thing, and we're doing them sequentially, or all at the same time, so it is a very complex process. Why are most cities a lot lower in PUD fees? Um, because I think many of them break them up into the different component parts. They charge one fee for the rezoning, they will charge another one for the site plan review, um, another fee for a subdivision if it involves those. So those stack up, too. Uh, as I was preparing for this today, I, I did notice that there are some fees that I think we could reduce easily. Um, as I was looking at them, giving them second thoughts, for example, the PUD final plan, uh, is not usually a difficult review, so I would come back later, um, after getting your feedback, or whenever we had, go through an adoption process, with a much lower fee, probably even below the median. Uh, the same goes for major modifications, and we'll take, relook at some of the other ones as well. That's all I had for you, um, and I will try to answer your questions.
Have you gotten any feedback from anybody that this is going to affect, to find out how mad they're gonna be?
We were going to, uh, we wanted to get it to you first, uh, and then we would probably shop it around a little bit.
Oh, good, okay.
Well, it's kind of along with that same question, just looking at it yourself, what do you think, is there any shock value to this, if you were to bring this to a developer or some, to think of the, going through those processes, someone's gonna be like, "This is nuts," or, "Oh, yeah, I can understand it."
Um, I, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be, uh, interested to see, uh, what the reaction is going to be. I think some are gonna say, "That's not really exorbitant." I mean, it's a, it's not a huge jump. We charge $180 for a subdivision review now, flat. That's not really, not comparable to, you know, of, using the use of staff time, um, I, I think, and so, uh, we were trying to get something more in the neighborhood where it's scaled to the type of development, but also, where was this? Just for an example, five acres or less, $800 for that. Uh, five to 10, 20 acres, a thousand, 20 or more, since 19, or 2017, we've had 71 subdivisions, 43 of those were less than five acres, so 60% of these subdivisions are gonna be around $800. Um, I think with all the other things that they're probably paying their consultants to put together the plats, ours is probably a pittance.
I think the other thing we can do is how we present it, and, you know, even if we were just to add what inflation has been since 1987.
Yeah.
That's, that's a way to look at it.
Loan.
Uh, we'll show that, you know, we should've done it. Should we do it all in one year? Probably not, but, and we did a phased in, we've done phased-in approach for some of those big utility jumps we've done, so, uh, there's different ways we can do it, and that's kind of the feedback we're looking at from you, if, if there's a target we need to hit versus making a, a leap, uh, all in one year, uh, but that's something that we're certainly want to, as we go through these, and we get into the budget process, that's really where we want to tackle it, and between now and then, we'll get some information out.
See, my, my thought on that is, I mean, we just did a pay raise, and this is all based on staff time, which is what you're paying the staff to do, and if we haven't changed the fees since '87, it's so far out of whack, we need to just instantly fix it. That's where I'm at, and, and I think that this doesn't go, you know, top, you're, you're still not covering your entire costs.
Oh, no.
So I think you've, you've done a pretty good job of graduating that, and, and that's gonna upset some people out there, because clearly, it's gonna cost a little bit more money to do development, but then again, they don't want us to raise taxes, do they? So, so, you know, it, it, it's like, you gotta balance it somehow, and, and I think that, you know, they're getting a good product, and they're not really paying the full cost of the product, the way you've laid it out, and so I support what you've got there.
Thank you.
So, when I look at something like Ben says, the subdivision preliminary plat or concurrent plat, and you're saying for five acres or less, it's $800, is that the same one where on this sheet, it says it was 150? Is, is that...
What, what sheet? I'm sorry, is that the?
The...
Oh, the, that's, the, the current fee is 100.
The current one is 150, and you're saying, go to up to 800?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think that is a pretty big leap. Um, uh, I think for us, it's, it seems reasonable, because we need to, you know, cover costs. But if that, if somebody's saying, "It's already so expensive to live in Manhattan, and now you're gonna increase this by, you know, 500 times as much," I'd rather see, uh, doubling it, doubling what we have, as opposed to quadrupling, uh, what they're giving for some of these things, um, for our price range, and do it annually. You know, maybe every other year, increase it, instead of just in a whole, whole chunk of it, because there is shock value to how much we are increasing some of these, and for the developers. And the other piece to that is, is this, when they come to us with a recommendation on how they want to do it, or is this coming from the city saying, "You must do this type of a, a zone, and you're gonna be charged for it?" Is it, is there any place here where we are telling them they must do something, or is it this, when they take the initiative and come to us and say, "This is what I would like to do," and then we say, "This is how much it costs"? There are a lot of questions in there.
No, well, to answer the last one, these are fees for people that initiate these things. They want to do something with the city. Annex, zone it to something, um, of, of their choice, um, and then do some sort of development on that. So all of those steps involve some eyes on it from staff, um, a lot of eyes, a lot of time, and, um, as you go through that, it, it, it does add up. This is not gonna be, I think, a cost of living impact to anyone that's works in this, or lives in the city, unless they themselves are doing a subdivision. Again, if you're at the scale of doing a subdivision, I think you can probably absorb that $800,000 fee, um, is, that's how I, I view it, it's not outside the realm of, of reality, um, in that case, is what I would say.
I understand, I just think it falls on us, because we haven't increased it in so long.
Yes.
At least we had done more incremental, like we do for water, or whatever it might be.
And, and that would be, I agree.
You know?
Yeah.
And now we're going to say, "Well, now we, you know, we need for you to do this, because it's so expensive." It's always been expensive.
Uh-huh.
We just never had a reaction to it.
Yeah.
And, and I think the reality is, there is a fee to it, we've always noticed it, and we always get compliments for how well our sta, staff does their work. I haven't heard anybody, most often, say anything negative about the quality of work that our staff provides, and it does come at a cost, and time. Um, but I, I would like to see more of like a, you know, like we do for water, uh, maybe 100% each year, till we get to the rate that you actually want to see, as opposed to once, and once it's done, it's done. But I don't know how long it's done. Do you come back five years from now? I don't know how frequently it'll be coming back, so, that, that's...
Right.
And again, I, I just assume do it, and it, it's philosophy, I mean, I understand with the water, we did that because it affected every single human in the city. As you said, it, it doesn't affect, uh, you know, the, the average homeowner, and they're gonna get irritated, and, and, you know, I've got another philosophy on that, that, you know, an NCO told me one time, he said, "You can gradually phase this in, and they'll be irritated for three years, or you can do it now, and they'll be irritated for one," and so that's where I'm at on this one.
Well, it keeps us consistent with the idea of, of that whoever's benefiting pays for it. There's no reason that I should have to sort of subsidize a new subdivision going in, be cut by virtue of the fact that it's, um, the taxpayers absorbing all of the, all of the fees. So, I think, yeah, if you, if you want the service of the city, whether it's Parks and Recreation, whatever it is, there, there is to be a little bit of a, yeah, whoever's getting the benefit of the service of the city should pay a little bit, at least, even though it's obviously still a fraction, it's closer, it's less, uh, less free, the, the fees we have now are, are pretty much nuisance fees, 'cause they're so small, and so at least, let's, let them know that they're, at least now they'll know they're getting something for their money, because we're spending a lot of time, uh, having to do these processes and procedures, so...
I think of it in terms of, if we haven't raised the rate since '87, and I have no way of knowing beyond what you're, that you've checked, is that the, certainly the price of a home and a business over those 35-plus years have gone a, a lot further than our puny little fees, so whatever we're gonna raise, I'm, I, I think we need to, in order to, because we have to sustain this organization, too, and these are not exorbitant. Uh, I, they're reasonable. I wanted to ask, the municipal facility review, and I think I know, I know that's the joint maintenance facility, the fire stations, to me, or sewer, whatever, anything munis, anything to do with the city, but we don't charge ourselves, right?
Uh, this, uh, this, municipal, municipality, for purposes of this...
Yeah.
Is any entity that is of a public nature, USD 383.
I see. The county?
Yeah, the county, yeah.
Okay, thanks, that's clear.
Yes.
Sock it to them. No, don't do that. All right, uh, any other questions for John, or we'll move on to the next phase, and we'll have public comment when we're done with all of these price, potential price increases. Going once? Have a seat. Thank you, John. Jared, or whoever...
You want pub, oh, you're gonna have public comment at the very end?
After, yeah, we'll get all the presentations here.
Okay. Oh, can you put the presentation on there? Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. This is phase two of the fee approach conversation for tonight. We're gonna talk open record requests, something Brenda Wolf, our excellent city clerk, is, works very tirelessly at, uh, in, in many instances, so gonna go over the existing ordinance today, how we wanna update our open records ordinance, and then how we wanna approach fees. The eighties was a common theme of when we apparently updated, uh, fees, we adopted our open record ordinance in 1984. As it is today, we charge a flat hourly rate of $6 an hour, uh, for the work it takes to, uh, fulfill an open record request. That would be if I'm fulfilling it, our IT manager, our city clerk, our fire chief, our code official, whoever that is, we, we would track that time, and we would charge $6 an hour. There's some other, uh, stuff in there about cost for materials. Back in the day, we used to print, uh, paper, and we still do a little bit today, but we would charge 10 cents per, per copy and things like that. Since 1984, uh, technology has increased quite a bit. The way that records are created and stored varies greatly, um, the different types of files, uh, how we access them, the size of these files, and the capacity it takes us to store them. We create a lot more records than we used to. Back in 1984, every email that I or you or any staff member sends is considered some type of correspondence record that we keep. Uh, as an example, I think we got quite a few thousands of those that, that we're keeping. So it's quite complex, it takes a lot more staff time to fulfill, uh, open records requests. Some more than others, some are, are very simple, uh, some people are, are reaching out for records that are really readily available, and we get them as quick as we can, because they're just not aware that they're on our website or somewhere else. So, we would like to update that 1984 ordinance, uh, with some various provisions. Essentially, this is all grounded in the Kansas Open Records Act, so we would state our intent to comply with that. We would appoint, you know, an official records custodian, being our city clerk, and have that city clerk also be our, our Freedom of Information Officer for individuals who are looking for information related to, to city records that are on file. Much like other ordinances, it would authorize our city manager to, um, appoint record custodians, as well as adopt an administrative policy, or how do we administrate our open records processes, um, and process those requests and, and carry those forward. And then like other ordinances, it would authorize you all to establish fees by resolution. Lot of cities, um, charge and have updated this over time, uh, we've done a lot of research, many of the first-class cities, we commonly look to, Overland Park, Lenexa, Lawrence, Topeka, Latha, many others have established some type of fee process. The Kansas Open Records Act does allow us to charge a reasonable fee, uh, based on the actual costs of finding these records, uh, you know, producing them, and, and the staff time it takes to do that. We, we did that research of first-class cities, most of them, they also do an hourly cost for the inspection, the research, the review, to satisfy that request when an individual comes in and says, "I want all records related to Parks and Rec budgeting process in 2022." That's a broad request, and it takes a lot of inspection, coordination with other departments. So we, uh, most cities do that on an hourly rate, based on the employee that is doing the work. Uh, so, based on their actual salary, their actual hourly rate, that's what they would charge, uh, in those instances. Some other cities do like a flat rate, usually around $30 an hour, it's a little bit more than six. Um, other cities have done hourly rates based on the type of position, so they'll say, if it's an administrative person, it's $20 an hour, if it's an IT or GIS, it's 30, if it's an attorney, it's 40, and, and so forth. So they'll do those tiers. The, uh, difficulty with that is, you're, you're constantly having to update it, and maybe in 2084, we'll look back and we'll be charging the, the same amount, so we, we don't wanna do that. We also wanna be able to charge for any cost of materials that it would take to produce a record, like printing it, or if it was such a big file that we had to put it on a jump drive, we would, we would charge the cost for the jump drive, or something like that. So our recommendation would be that, uh, when we, after we update that ordinance and, and we, and we bring that fee resolution back, it would be based on the hourly cost, and that would be based on the minimum hourly rate defined in our salary ordinance by the employee doing the work. And that way, annually, we wouldn't have to come back to you and change that, it would be based on the salary ordinance for that position, and we would do it in 15-minute increments, which is really what, uh, most cities do, they, they break it down to 15-minute increments when the staff is, is tracking that time. We also wanted to put in there provisions that would allow the, you know, the flexibility of if a, if a record is readily available, someone's coming in and says, "You know, I want the minutes of the October 7th, 2022 meeting, that's on our website, they just don't know how to get it, it'll take us a second to find it, we'll provide it to you, we're not gonna charge you in that instance." And then we would also include some provisions, uh, related to, uh, cost of materials, if applicable in that event. Lot of cities also do a threshold for payment. A common approach would be, if, um, if it's gonna be maybe less than, uh, $150, uh, we would, um, maybe require that individual to accept the fee before we did the work. Say, "You know, this is gonna take four hours, and it's gonna cost $80, do you accept this before we do the work?" They accept, we go find the record, and then we assess the fee before we release the records. Same would go if it's something higher than that. But that, that's another common approach that a lot of cities do. So we wanted to provide this concept to you, that's, that's really all I have, I don't even know if I have a little question slide, but wanted to get that feedback for you, so we can start working on those ordinances, updating that 1984 ordinance, coming back with a fee resolution that would, um, that would... with a fee resolution that would, that would reflect this fee recommendation, or any other recommendations that you have. I do want to point out, too, that we're also looking to enhance our open record process. We're working on a software that will be, it'll be a lot easier and automated for the individual to request records, and it'll be a lot easier for our staff to work together to drop those files into a system, do a lot of redactions. A lot of records require redactions, because there are certain things in there that don't have to be made available to the public, because they're sensitive information. So, we're hoping to roll that out here in the next month or so, as well, once we update this ordinance and the fees, and start that process there. So, really excited about that.
Yeah, I think that's a good presentation. I dealt with this a little bit in my last job. People asking for stuff from the college, and the only thing I'd add, I think that's good to tie that 15-minute increments to the actual cost of the employee, you know, based on the pay scale, because a flat rate just doesn't cover some of the requests. And cost of materials, you know, very important. I would add in their file format, have your IT guys look at that, because we used to get requests, you know, somebody may want something in a, in an Excel spreadsheet, and you don't have it in an Excel spreadsheet. And so, under reasonable, you can actually deny a request like that, and say, "That's not the file formats. Here's the file formats we have, PDF, Word, you know, Excel, whatever it happens to be," because otherwise, the cost can get astronomical, because somebody can ask for some weird file type, and, you know, you'll be doing all kinds of extra work, and it, you know. So, you might mention something like that.
Yep.
In there, too. But otherwise, I think, I think that's good, and you've got to, you've got to recover the cost of that, you know?
Yeah, I think I'm mostly favorable with this. So, if somebody does file for, for a record, open records, do we give them a deadline? Like, do we give them a timeline when they're going to receive it? How does that work?
I believe Kansas Open Records Act requires us to respond to that request within three days, but respond as in.
Yes, I received it.
We received it, we're working on it, this may take some time, but then, we work in constant contact with that individual, giving them that estimate. We think this could take a week, we think it could take two, and we go from there.
Just so that, if it's like within 15-minute increments, whether, so that an employee also, the person requesting it wants to make sure that it's not being abused, as far as how they're getting paid, if we're paying them.
Yep.
In certain ways. And if there's a timeline attached to whatever record that they're asking for. Sometimes it is an extraordinary amount. And is there, does it matter if it's an organization, let's say, like a newspaper or a media outlet, as opposed to an individual? Does that matter at all?
Not necessarily. There are other organizations, like governmental organizations that we work with, that we, you could possibly exempt from that. RCPD works with us a lot, the county, other areas.
Other than that, I mean, because those actually have to do with how we also function, probably. But as far as somebody says, like if a media outlet says, "Well, you know, I watched your meeting, I want to have the open records and all of these things that happen." Not so much what we are discussing, but others. Is there a different cost to who is asking? It's a flat rate for, regardless of who is asking, is what I wanted to.
Be regardless of who's asking.
All right. Thank you.
Do you have some requests that are never picked up or paid for? Is there, do people ever order it, and then don't follow up?
Brenda, you may be able to speak to that.
We have very few.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
With this new system, we wouldn't release the record until the payment is.
If the person were to ask for it, in a, you know, you could just email it to them as an attachment, is that, the expense is in identifying and locating it, but it would be cheaper than if you had to print it, I would think.
Yeah. I don't believe we're required to, to print it in that way. If it's an electronic record that exists, we would provide them the electronic copy, and then it'd be their responsibility.
Most people these days would want that.
I'd say overall, what you have is good. I am a little sensitive that we want to make sure that it's reasonable, or else, there's no point in open records, because they're always too expensive to get any of the information. And then, I also, glad you said you're going to get the software to make it easier to be able to pull the data, because I think it's incumbent on us to have a filing system, electronic or whatever it is, that makes it easy to get data. What some groups do is they make it purposely cumbersome, that makes the fees extremely high, if you ever want to get something, because of the way that they do it. So, I think, like I said, incumbent upon us to streamline the way we keep data, make it very easy to grab and to, and to give it.
This new system should help us save a lot of time in how we're coordinating with, you know, municipal court gets a lot of these, fire department, clerk's office handles a lot of them, but then, we're bringing in other departments. We're bringing in our city attorney's office, and we'll have tools in here that are much easier to redact. We actually have systems in place in this, where we can choose why it's, why we're redacting it, and it'll automatically, so you'll hover over it as the person who requested, and say, "Oh, this is personal information, that's why it's redacted." And all that stuff's automatically kind of built in, which is a lot better than the way we're doing it now.
I'm also, you know, there are really old records that would still require somebody going to a file somewhere, and there may need to be a difference in your fee compared to getting an electronic one that's easily and readily. And I'm really glad that they aren't as expensive to retrieve as they would have been in the old paper file. But I want to be sure, too, that, I don't know, I don't know your proposed cost or charge, but I remember some years ago, there was a proposal to make it a dollar a sheet of paper, or something. I want to make sure we aren't, we don't overdo it. I want to do some, I think it's 25 cents a page, or something now, maybe, and.
Now, now it's even cheaper. It's about five cents a page.
Okay. Good. Well, I just don't want it to be too, too extreme, whatever that may mean, so, but thank you. I, I think you're, I'd like to see the ordinance. I'm, the ordinance isn't here, so you might send me the ordinance.
The current one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The ordinance number, because I didn't see it.
All right. Throw something together and bring it back.
Thank you.
Anybody want to publicly comment on this proposal? Don't do it. Okay. State, state, state your name again.
Okay, I'm Niklet Unruh, again, sorry. My tiny little question is, so it sounds like, in listening to the presentation regarding the first one for development, we stated that the cities, we had sample cities, and it sounded like the sample cities that you spoke about were Lenexa, Lawrence, and Alatha. And I'm just wondering if, if we could maybe sample some cities that are a little closer to our population size? Because Alatha and Lawrence, I believe, are much larger than us, and I think that's just something for us to consider in the future, in all considerations, when, when recognizing that. So, that's just my only question. Thank you.
There really aren't any that are our size. I mean, Lawrence is 75,000.
97, according to 2022.
Yeah. So, anyway.
And 146 for Alatha. And there are some that are in the 50s, but I think that's, we're in the 60s, so I think that's come up.
We're 55, 54.
Yeah, yeah. So, just kind of recognizing multiple, and I don't necessarily know the sample cities that were mentioned earlier, but I think it would be important to use a wider sample.
All right. Very good. All right. We'll close public comment. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Ready, seconded by Commissioner Butler, to adjourn the March 7th, 2023 meeting. Please call a roll.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Hattasol?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5 to 0.
Does it? Meeting adjourned.[1799.34]